One, this is the regular Wednesday December 2nd, 2020 meeting of the NAC's Board of Commissioners is called to order. You will please first join me in a few moments of silence. Now if you will stand as you're able and join me in the place. But relations to the mind of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands under God, an individual would live to you. Next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda and a motion would be in order.
Send my name to that.
A motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. The next item on our agenda are recommendations, and I'll call on Andy to introduce our new interim Public Works Director.
Morning Mayor Commissioners. Uh, Jerry, is Terry over there?
He's there. I'm gonna have to unmute.
I'm not gay.
There you are. We're looking up at you, Terry.
Okay, good morning.
We wanted to go ahead and introduce Terry Halgen. Uh, he's joined us as an interim Public Works Director. Uh, as the board is aware, we have been searching for a Public Works Director since Ralph Burroughs' retirement. Uh, we actually went through one round of interviews, and we're now gonna begin a second round. So in the meantime, uh, we invited Terry to join the team. Uh, he'll be with us likely until March, hopefully, until we can get through this second round of interviews. Uh, Terry comes to us from Grants Pass, Oregon. Uh, and Terry is a longtime colleague of Greg Sparks, and they worked together in Alamos, Colorado, I believe in their late twenties, early thirties, so. There's been a little, uh, evolution there, uh, but they've remained in good touch, and I believe that they, uh, spent some time working together and, um, trekking in the mountains together and had some adventures. So, uh, they're longtime friends, uh, but Terry is a retired Public Works Director of at least five different communities, uh, mostly in western states. Uh, he's worked with Greg in Alamos, Colorado. Uh, he also worked in Grants Pass, Oregon, and he was the Public Works Director in Laramie, Wyoming, uh, and Trinidad, Colorado as well. Uh, he's also been a city engineer in a community and has a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from North Dakota. Um, he's had a lot of experience. Uh, he is here staying in Redanthe with his wife Frances and their dog, their Chihuahua mix, uh, Art. And, uh, with that, I'll welcome Terry to the town. We're happy he's here. He's already dove into some projects that we need some help with, and, um, we're certainly glad to have him.
Thank you, Terry, for lending your expertise and experience to the town for this period of time while we're in need. Uh, we greatly appreciate, uh, your effort.
Well, thank you. I'm glad to be here.
And, uh, I look forward to meeting you at some point in some, uh, safe socially-distanced manner as you're out and about at your job.
It would be nice if this entire pandemic would be passed before I could, uh, leave here, but we'll see what happens over time.
Yes, we will, unfortunately. Commissioners, any comments for Terry before we let him go?
Welcome. Welcome aboard, Terry.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item on our agenda is presentation of the 2020 Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year Award, and we'll ask the, um, nominees if they will come in. Um, staff asked me about how to do this, and I guess any other way that was meaningful and didn't seem quite appropriate to have everybody appear just on screen, so we arranged a way for them to be here, uh, present and socially-distanced from one another and from us, uh, so that we could do this in person. I told staff, I said, you know, this is, this is really recognizing our employees is one of the most meaningful things that we do, and, um, and it's an important day when we do this. Um, and I'll ask the Commissioners for comments before we, um, before we introduce the winner this year, but, uh, when people ask me about being the mayor of the town of Aggad, I tell them it's actually a pretty easy job, but the reason it's an easy job is because we have a great town with great employees like y'all and who, uh, who do their jobs well. And, um, y'all, I appreciate y'all making my job easy, um, and for leading the way in your various departments and showing, um, excellent behavior and excellent service to our, to our public. The only thing, uh, I would say that's really hard about this job is every year when we get the slate, the nominees is choosing one of you to be the winner because, um, everyone, um, when, when that day comes and you are nominated, everyone's considering. So I'll ask the Commissioners if anybody has any observations.
Only that each of you represents what's best in Aggad.
Yes.
Great nominations and hard decisions today. Yeah. Um, I just appreciate all you do, all, all the staff does, and the one thing that's kind of impressed me, of course, the mayor's exactly right, this is probably one of the hardest things we have to do, but it's also, we think we know a lot about a lot of things, and it's not till the employee of the year comes along that we really find out some things about some particular individuals, and it's really nice to have the people that work for the town, working for the town.
Relations to each other, thank you for your service, uh, to the mayor and Aggad, y'all, what makes Aggad so good? When I was an employee, I used to always hear the Commissioners say, oh, that was tough, that was tough. I'm going, tough is it? I mean, you could do that. I had my experience and, uh, you did all that well, and you are deserving of the award, but, um, thank you each for your service.
That's simple, John, because it's the greatest, everybody can. There's no distinction hardly between anybody with all those achievements, you contribute to the town and its tax papers.
I think it's telling that, um, the awardees come from all departments. I mean, it's, um, there is valuable leadership, obviously valuable service in every department. Um, and again, that's having great people in every department again is what makes this difficult.
Mayor, I just think add one thing, it's not to forget that it's the award we, we, I mean, we mentioned that earlier, somebody that worked with Earl and something they may remember, they remember Earl, I think it's quite an honor to be associated with the, with your name down the pan, they'll stand in there. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. So the, um, the winner, uh, is the recipient of a plaque, and this year, um, the plaque reads that Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year Award is presented to John Kitty of the town of Aggad.
Nobody looks at yours. Because we would be singing three blind lights about the refs, and we always had a big conversation. We travel a lot, and, uh, some of the situations when we were away, away games, very exciting, uh, tricks that you had, and it was for our kids, and you all, we was putting our kids ahead of us, and, uh, it really humbles me to receive this award, because he was such a good. All right. It's both of you guys. Almost thank you, Stan.
Thank you, John. Appreciate those remarks. We have, uh, for each of you, for the nominees, um, we have a $200 gift card. Um, we thank you again for your good service to the town, uh, and for the employee of the year, uh, we have a $400 gift certificate.
And a day off of staying, enjoy.
The next item on our agenda is presentation, uh, Terry's, or the Dare County Motorcycle Toy Run.
Good morning, Mayor Commissioners. I seem to be having a little bit of a internet problem here, so, uh, bear with me if you will. I hope you can hear me.
Uh, we, we can hear you and we can see you, so, uh, please proceed.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you guys for, uh, letting me take up some of your time this morning. I, uh, you kind of scared me a little bit this morning because you introduced your new Public Works Director, and, uh, I thought, oh, my God, they've hired me. Uh, but, uh, I'm here this morning to make the presentation for the Dare County Motorcycle Toy Run, uh, and, uh, we started this in 2016. Uh, this would have been our, uh, fifth year, uh, but unfortunately, due to the COVID situation, we had to cancel our April event. That's one of our major fundraisers, and it, it scared us all. Uh, we kind of felt that, uh, you know, we, we might fall behind on our fundraising activities, um, and fortunately, uh, the restrictions were lifted enough that we could do our toy run, uh, in September. Uh, we managed to pull that off, and we expanded it to a two-day event, uh, which, uh, helped us raise a little bit more money, and, uh, we had projected that we would raise approximately $50,000 this year, uh, and, uh, we fell short of that goal. Uh, uh, we, we wound up, uh, right at the $40,000 mark, but we think that our contribution, uh, will, uh, hopefully aid buying Christmas for about a thousand kids. Um, the need this year is so much greater, um, and, uh, you know, a lot of people out of work and, and so forth, um, and we, we have had some, uh, huge successes this year, even in spite of the COVID, uh, pandemic. Uh, we did not do a video, so I'm not gonna be presenting a video this morning. I know that, uh, you know, that's, uh, maybe a disappointment to some folks, but, uh, with the restrictions we faced, it was hard to, to do that. Um, we did some partnerships, um, and, and I'm, I'm not so sure I can hear you guys, but I, you know, hopefully you can hear me. Uh, we, uh, we, we made some partnerships this year. We partnered with a guy named Monte Hill, who is a legendary motorcycle drag racer. Uh, he set all kinds of records, uh, in his career, and he has, uh, the world's only 1,000 horsepower Suzuki drag bike that he goes around the, the country and, and displays. Uh, he comes down and sets up at our rally in, in April, and, uh, people enjoy seeing that. Uh, we've also partnered with Smithfield Foods, um, and Seven City Bike Events, and we have contracted a fellow named Rhett Rotten out of, uh, uh, Florida, and he comes up and does a motorcycle stunt show. So we're gonna have a big event in April, and, uh, you know, we hope that people are able to attend, but today, what we want to do is we want to show appreciation to your police department, because this year, again, as in years past, they aided us in, in traffic assist. Um, we had our, like I said, our fifth year, uh, with no incidents, and a, a lot of that was in part to your police department. And, and guys, I, I know that, uh, you know, you're awful proud of those policemen, uh, and, uh, you know, you, you certainly express that every time I talk to y'all, um, but I'll tell you what, they made y'all look good. Uh, they did a great job for us again this year. Mayor, I hope that, uh, you received the plaque I dropped off at Town Hall.
Yes, sir, I did. If you can hear me or if you can see me, I have it, uh, I have it right here.
Unfortunately, I can't see you. I'm seeing two pictures of myself, and that's probably not a good thing, but, uh, uh, did you get that big check? No, I'm just kidding.
No, sir.
I'm just kidding, there weren't no check. It was just a plaque that we would like for you to present to your police chief for us. Uh, it's a small token of appreciation of how much, uh, we really thank y'all for the great effort in helping us do what we feel is necessary for the children, uh, of Dare County. Uh, and again, you know, all the monies that we raise, um, stays within Dare County. There's not a dime of it that goes outside of Dare County, uh, uh, for our toy run, uh, and we make sure that it benefits all the children. I don't have, everybody on my team is, is a volunteer. Nobody gets paid a salary, uh, they do it for the love of the children, and, uh, we thank you so much, uh, for supporting your police department to help us. And, and Mayor, I'll hush now.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Terry. We appreciate, uh, your recognition of our department, uh, with this, with this plaque, um, and we appreciate what you and your organization do on behalf of the children of Dare County. It's, uh, it's an amazing thing, and as you indicated, it is, uh, it is a year in which the need is very great, um, in all communities, including ours, um, and what you've done is even more important this year, and, uh, we, we thank you very much, and we wish you Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas to each of y'all, and, and again, thank you so much. Have a great day.
Next item on our agenda is public comment, and I'll ask again, we had asked the public comment be submitted in writing, and I'll ask. And we have no public comment. Got it, John? So you're off the hook today. Merry Christmas. Keep early. Um, the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, which you have before you. Um, if you had a chance to move those items, a motion would be in order. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next item on our agenda are reports and recommendations from the Planning Board of the planning and development of the director. Michael.
Good morning. Hopefully everyone can hear me. I won't, uh, do a screen share, but I'll walk through a couple of items, uh, on my director's report. Included a permitting turnaround report, uh, updated for the first quarter of FY '20 and '21. Um, there's also a reference to a need to potentially update, uh, the stormwater ordinance with respect to updated reference materials or resource materials, something that, uh, town staff primarily David Ryan has been working to update, um, along with Kate Jones, and, um, we didn't want to necessarily pursue an update, uh, of the ordinance and amendment of the ordinance to reference this, uh, to insert this reference, uh, knowing that there were other potential, uh, considerations going on. So just any feedback, uh, that the board, um, would have on direction in terms of whether or not we should go ahead and update that reference manual. Um, we also had a recommendation, uh, from staff in the planning board regarding, uh, potential provisions regarding registration of events held at residential properties, something we had talked about, um, initially perhaps a, a year ago. Um, and planning board had some initial conversations, and then, uh, early days of the pandemic, uh, kind of delayed those conversations, and then we, um, held them off until the fall. Now we came up with some, uh, recommendations, uh, in terms of provisions that could go into the town code, um, in chapter four. Uh, this would generally require a, uh, a registration of events, um, not approval by the town. Um, it's more of a, a notification process, uh, and it would generally be for events that, uh, were expected to have more than 50 individuals at a residential property. Um, we note in, I note in the director's report, um, that there are, are some other potential updates to chapter four that we've come to realize may be necessary over the last few months, um, so we could certainly move forward, um, with these specific provisions or roll them into maybe a larger review of chapter four for the board. Then, uh, perhaps finally, uh, we did receive notification last week, uh, that we were success, successfully awarded a $75,000 grant from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation's, uh, National Coastal Resilience Fund, and that would be for the development of the estering shoreline management plan for the town. Excuse me. Um, it would be a, uh, require a match, which is something was, uh, presented to the board previously, and I believe, um, was part of the budget adjustment, uh, on the consent agenda today. And then, uh, we also received a $2,500, uh, cost share assistance award from Dare Soil and Water Conservation District, and that would be for a low-impact development, uh, demonstration project, essentially a rain garden that we're looking to install here on a Town Hall property. So that's it unless the, uh, board has any questions.
Um, before, uh, I opened it up to the board, there was a conversation, um, here a little bit earlier, on a draft, um, agenda, there was, um, there appeared a reference to changing setbacks, uh, which is something that had been referred from the board, and then that was not part of this final agenda. Can you give us any other data that would, uh, might be coming back to us?
Yeah, I would expect it will be on the consent agenda, um, for January, for a public hearing in February. The planning board had a, a good discussion about it at their last meeting, um, but they, I think there were some additional questions they had. They wanted some information, um, generally relative to, um, you know, the width of right-of-way, the width of unimproved right-of-way that, um, you know, may or may not ever be improved, and, uh, I, I think the board's generally considering whether or not they could entirely relax a setback, um, the corner lot setback along some street right-of-way depending on their width, because it could be anticipated that it, they would, there would never be a road, um, or a street, um, and therefore no vehicular traffic that warranted, you know, an increased setback.
Thank you. Uh, board members, any questions? Will?
I, I just have a, a couple. It may not be for the planning director, it may be for us, um, but in the report, um, the planning director references, you know, residential stormwater rules, and, uh, I think the planning board and the planning staff are waiting on us, um, so just want to remind us of that. And the second is the non-compromising hotel fishing piers. I still think everybody's waiting on us.
Okay.
Um, I'm not saying I'm ready to move on a lot of stuff, but, and then in, in there, there's still the word legacy, and I still have personally, uh, do not know what legacy means, and I wish somebody would define legacy to me.
As by recollection, we asked them to, to work on that definition, uh, in one of our previous meetings, and I would expect that, along with, I believe, perhaps one or two other, uh, technical terms that were, uh, in the ordinance, and, um, I would expect those definitions to be back to us as well.
No, I, hey. Michael, first a clarification.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I thought you said, I apologize. No, I did, then I thought, is there any way, are we having, we're having a meeting mid-month this month?
Yes.
Um, supposed to move forward the setback item, move it forward to schedule public hearings.
That's a good question.
Instead of waiting until February, because we did it December, then we could have January public hearing mid-month.
Yeah. Michael, I don't know if you were able to hear that. Question would be, did we, um, would, would the process through planning board be such that if we, um, set a public hearing at our mid-month meeting for January, is that possible?
Yeah, so what you could do, because the planning board meeting is on December 15th, and I, I would expect they would wrap up their recommendation at that meeting. We could, because I believe this meeting is going to be a, a continued meeting until, uh, the mid-month meeting, so.
Right.
For the mid-month meeting, we could add an agenda item, um, for you to consider that recommendation and schedule a public hearing, and we could schedule the public hearing for January. So yeah, I, I think, assuming the planning board, um, finalizes a recommendation, which I don't anticipate that they wouldn't do, that, that's possible, yes.
Okay, thank you. Then I would ask that we try to make that, make that so if you would. Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Seer.
Michael, can you confirm that that Thursday, December 10th Farmers Market is actually three to seven PM?
It is, yeah. That's, we had, um, scheduled one of the farmers' markets to be held in the evening, um, from three to seven.
Okay. And then, um, the other thing, in an October retreat, we talked about beach grass and, and sand fencing, and I believe Kate, uh, Jones was working on something along those lines. Are you able to report anything on that?
I am. Let me, uh, let me look at my notes very quickly. So you're right, at October, uh, the board's mid-month workshop, uh, we had talked about the potential of a cost share, uh, for the beach grass program, and, or really for a portion of that, uh, that program. So generally, the budget includes, as I think the board is aware, approximately 150,000 or exactly $150,000, um, for sprigging and fencing, and the idea would be that we, we generally wanted to, to have the board's, um, approval to use a portion of those funds. We're thinking a maximum of $50,000, um, to issue cost share or essentially grants, uh, to property owners to reimburse them or offset the costs of their, uh, purchase and installation of, of beach grass. Um, so generally what we're thinking, and, and the intent was to sketch this out, um, in more detail and bring it back to the board's mid-month meeting coming up, but the general idea would be, um, you know, a maximum amount possibly of $500, um, per property owner, a 50/50 cost share, so we would only, uh, reimburse at, you know, 50% of the total cost. We'd likely have a maximum amount, um, purchase price per plant so that we were insured that we were getting a, a, an acceptable level of plants replaced for the reimbursement. Um, and I believe those are the main points. Um, you know, we estimate, um, that, that a lot of these would go, uh, to the sand relocation properties, those that are, um, removing sand and relocating sand and need to do stabilization of a dune, uh, but we also know that there's other property owners that want to do stabilization, uh, not associated with sand relocation, so, uh, that's generally what we've, uh, what we scoped out for this, and, um, you know, happy to proceed however the board wishes.
Yes, sir.
Will this proposal and the program be in place for the next planting window? Because you can't just plant any time of the year.
Yeah, that is the goal. Um, obviously, the, the sooner, um, we're able to get everything finalized, the sooner we're able to, to make sure that, uh, property owners are aware of the program. the sooner we're able to, to make sure that property owners are aware of the program and take part in it. But I think Kate's done a great job in getting everything, you know, at least in draft form for consideration by myself and Andy and David Ryan. As well, and Amy Miller as well. So I think, I think we're there. I think if there's any concerns that the board has, you know, if they're concerned about maximum grant amounts, you know, the, the maximum budget available for this, we think that, you know, again, $50,000 would leave $100,000 for a town project that I know that Andy and David and Kate are separately kind of scoping. But we, we think that this is a, you know, a good way. It's modeled after Currituck County's program. And I think they've been successful with it. And I think Kate is confident that, um, that it can be successful here.
Good morning, Mr. Sears.
I was going to ask if we can do something sooner than later on this topic. We've got three months. The longer we drag this out, the less window, as Ms. Billings said, we'll have. And that, you know, out of the five of us here, Webb probably is on the beach more. But in my short, you know, check over Thanksgiving, a lot of our sand fence that we put out during the beach nourishment is already completely covered. And we want to take advantage of, you know, that stable dune line sooner than later.
So Michael, you mentioned the possibility of being ready for a recess mid-month meeting and we can take action then. So it sounds like if that's possible, we'd like to take action at that point. I'd like to also remind us, there had been a question asked about taking a look at how the pay bales had performed for sand fencing. And if you could also report back to us on, on the use of pay bales, I think that would be helpful too.
Yes, sir. And just a thought, I don't know that, obviously the board has approved a budget and there's $150,000 in the budget for sprigging and fencing. You know, one perspective could be that this cost share program, this grant program is, is not deviating from that budget. And perhaps there, there's not necessarily a, a need for the board to specifically approve the scope of this program. But that's up to the board, of course.
I do think that we would like to hear the form of the rollout and how this information will be made available to the public and what the sort of timeline might, might be. So if you can sort of round all that into a complete picture for us.
Very good.
And also get that information to the public as well.
Very good.
Anything else? Thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is old business. Item G1 is consideration of a resolution opposing installation of additional power poles on 158. This resolution has been completely redrafted. I think it's in pretty decent shape. So allow me to read that and then the board is willing to modify or, or take action. This is a resolution declaring opposition to the installation of additional above-ground power infrastructure in the US 158 corridor in access by Dominion Energy ordered subsidiaries. Whereas Dominion Energy provides electricity to the outer banks. Whereas Dominion is previously installed and maintained, maintains one row of poles and power lines in US 158 corridor. And whereas the US 158 highway corridor is a dominant feature in the primary traffic corridor of the northern outer banks of the town of Nagseth. And whereas Dominion Energy is conducting a study to determine the best method and route to provide a second circuit between the Collington Town and Axet substation. Whereas among the options for this route, the existing poles have already been excluded. And whereas alternatives include an underwater route through the Roanoke Sound, underground in the US 158 highway corridor, or overhead on new poles in the US 158 highway corridor. And whereas the areas affected by these poles are low-density, low-rise residential and commercial. And whereas the aesthetic effects of transmission lines are negative to most people, especially where such lines cross natural landscapes, since tall structures are out of proportion and not compatible with carefully planned, low-rise development. And whereas the town of Nagseth Vision State, the state's preservation of our economy and quality of life is directly tied to maintaining the Nagseth character. And whereas the Vision State further elaborates that the Nagseth character is defined by our historic architecture, scenic views, open spaces and low-density development. And whereas the town of Nagseth Comprehensive Plan includes specific policy statements that articulate our desired vision for development, including ensuring that the character of Nagseth is preserved as a single-family residential beach community tied to its natural environment. Character being defined by development that blends with the landscape, preserving natural vegetation, dunes, open spaces and environmental quality. Buildings with a residential scale and appearance of low heights and small footprints designed to reflect the heritage of Nagseth. Commercial development serves the needs of residents and visitors but respects the goals of community related to design and appearance. Land uses that are compatible with the community and adjacent properties that don't create excessive noise, light and unsafe conditions or other nuisances, and signs that provide adequate communication but does not dominate the landscape. Whereas as a community, we believe that certain design alternatives for power infrastructure to include additional above-ground infrastructure are in direct conflict with the vision goals of the town. And whereas the impact of these poles will be detrimental to the health, safety and welfare of citizens and travelers. Whereas the installation of a new row of poles will approximately double the number of safety hazards to the traveling public. And whereas reputable published studies have presented evidence that overhead power lines and poles depress property values in proximity to them. Now therefore be it resolved that the board of commissioners, the town of Nagseth, is hereby request the following. That Dominion Energy abandoned the option of a second row of poles and associated above-ground infrastructure along US 158. That Dominion Energy consider only those options for power infrastructure that are consistent. The Nagseth's goals for aesthetics and community preservation, but that the North Carolina Utilities Commission denies the waste of additional above-ground infrastructure to include a second row of poles within the US 158 corridor through the town of Nagseth. Adopted the second date of December. Would have anything to add?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is up staff. How does the comprehensive plan integrate with our Kama land use plan?
The comprehensive plan is going through a review to also become our Kama land use plan. And so it would essentially be one document.
But it isn't the same document today.
Not today. Not until Kama adopts that.
The, the reason I'm asking was I wanted to know if any of these power poles were in a Kama designated area. And the point being, if they are in a Kama designated area, then it would require also a consistency review by the state.
I, I, I don't know that answer right off hand. If they're in a designated area. Just off the top of my head, there may be some that are. The Jockeys Ridge is a designated AEC. Most other AECs are directly adjacent to the sound. And so some of these might be in those areas, but without looking at that, I'd have to.
My only point, I'm, I'm very supportive of the resolution, but I would also request that we look to see if any of the polls or actions by Dominion and Dominion is operating within an AEC. And if so, request that we have that consistency review.
Okay. And just, just to your point, you know, even if the comprehensive plan is not formally adopted, the 2010 land use plan probably still has elements that would speak to this, that could then be reviewed for consistency as well. So either way, we'll have, we'll ask if that can be done if they're in an AEC.
Four, one hour. In that case, a motion would be in order. I have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is from the November 4th board meeting, consideration of appointment to the Jockeys Ridge State Park Soundside Access Ad hoc. And you see that the staff guidance for the individuals to be appointed are Megan Ball, Soundside Road resident, Bobby Murray, Soundside Road resident, Joy Greenwood, superintendent of Jockeys Ridge State Park, Michael Zainer, the planning and development manager, Bill Webster, the chief of police, and Commissioner Sears has expressed interest in also serving on that committee and Commissioner is still at the same time.
Yeah.
So what are the board's thoughts or is there a motion?
Have all these people been contacted to see if they would serve?
Yes, they have, and they all agreed to serve.
Then I'll make a motion that we include the list provided and add Commissioner Sears as a member as well.
Second. Thank you. I have a question in a second. Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Sears. Sir, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. We look forward to getting progress on that. The next item on our agenda is new business. The first would be committee reports. I'll ask.
Mr. Sears.
That would be correct. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is consideration of documentation for NCPDQ, a water resource development grant resolution. Who, who is speaking to this? David?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Board of Commissioners. I apologize in advance. My video seems to be on the fritz, so I guess we'll just have to go with the audio for the time being. So earlier this spring, the town submitted a grant application with the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality for coastal storm damage mitigation funding. The state funds are available through the Division of Water Resources, C S D M fund, which was established to help North Carolina coastal communities recover from hurricane damages. The application request is intended to supplement the FEMA category G beach restoration project for sand volume losses which were sustained from Hurricane Dorian. It should be noted that the FEMA Public Assistance Grant Application is currently under review. On October 20th, 2020, an award letter was received from the Division of Water Resources for financial assistance in the award amount of $1,408,247.19 for the Nagseth Beach Restoration Project. In order to move forward and in advance of the contract execution, the board is required to submit a resolution in conjunction with submission of the town's conflict of interest policy and appropriation request form. Attached in your packet is a copy of the resolution for board consideration and adoption.
So I ask the board, if everyone has had an opportunity to review this development grant application, are there any questions, Davis? I think it's necessary that primarily, primarily a technical appears to be in order. So a motion to approve would be in order.
I should approve the resolution.
Thank you. A motion and a second to approve resolution. Any further discussion? Your example, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you, David. Anything else?
I think we've got the next item on the agenda as well.
We do. So we will move to the next item. That's consideration of the Moffitt and Dickel Post Dorian Reef Restoration Contract Task Order for hydrographic survey and data evaluation. So continue, David.
Okay. Attached for the board consideration is a professional service fee proposal to obtain a hydrographic survey and perform data analysis of the town's previously permitted offshore sand borrow areas. McKimmon Creed, who is under subcontract with the town, will collect the topography of the ocean floor via a 28-foot survey vessel with a fully automated hydrographic survey system. Once this field data is collected, the information will be processed and transmitted to Moffitt and Nickel, the town's coastal engineer for further analysis. The purpose of this effort is to collect and map the underwater changes in the offshore borrow areas, which will be required for permitting purposes. Once analyzed, the findings will be reported to the town as well as the North Carolina Division of Coastal Management. Our intent is to initiate this task order to take advantage of the better weather windows to conduct the offshore survey in addition to beginning with the initial permitting efforts. We would like to take the opportunity to discuss the additional details of the 2022 beach restoration project at year December 16th recess meeting. So in this task, which is noted as task five, McKimmon Creed will conduct the hydrographic graphic survey as a subconsultant to Moffitt and Nickel, who will perform the analysis. So for this request, we are asking the board to approve the attached task order and fee proposal for the consultants to proceed with the defined scope of work in an amount not to exceed $32,286. And I'll be glad to ask any, or answer any questions that you have.
Questions forward.
Amy, is this in addition to what we've already contracted into?
This is. So this is an additional scope of work that was added as a result of some discussions we had with the North Carolina Division of Coastal Management. So this is something new and in addition to what we're already contracted for.
Thank you.
David, the total is 32,286 of that. McKimmon Creed would get 22,000 of that.
Uh, McKimmon Creed is 20,700 and Moffitt and Nickel is 11,516. That's the breakdown of the two scopes of work.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, David. So approval of this item and the total amount of $32,286, a motion would be in order.
I ask you to approve.
Second, I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you, David.
All right. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is consideration of a board committee appointment to Arts and Culture Committee. Andy, are you going to speak to them? Andy?
Oh, certainly can.
So we, we have, appears we have one spot open and one candidate. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Have you, has anyone had a follow-up conversation with Ms. White?
Yes, I believe so. And she's expressed interest in serving.
She is a part-time resident. I know. If the board understands that, it's a full-time resident.
May I make a motion to appoint Betty White to yours?
Thank you. I have a question and a second to appoint. Thank you. I have a question in a second to appoint Betty White. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. And if you will please, Andy, convey our appreciation. I'm sure we'll be sending her a letter, but also convey our appreciation for permanent serving.
Sure. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda, or items referred to, are presentations from the town attorney. I believe you're going to ask for a close session.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
We will defer that for the moment then. And if there's something else, I'll get it to the manager.
Go ahead.
All right. So then, Greg, the next item is, or the items referred to, presentations from the town attorney.
Mayor, permission? So this item is J two. J one is the closed session item, but this is the Discussion of State Health and Human Services COVID- nineteen County Alert System. I think here on November seventeenth, the governor and North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services announced a new county alert system, and Dare County is identified as orange, which is substantial community spread zone, but with a moderate impact on county hospitals. And they've attached a guide for public officials to consider. Kind of before I go into a few of those things, I want to just again reiterate some of the things that we have been doing here, and I know things that the board's pretty familiar with, but one is installing bipolar ionization filters in public facilities, and that is just started this week, and that will also include this building. We've gone to Zoom meetings, both for the commission as well as the planning board. We are doing the messaging in our monthly newsletter and press releases about COVID. We've tightened our own internal protocols. We're working with Dare County Public Health, particularly as we had a couple employees last week who did test positive for COVID and had potential for contact with other employees, and we've worked closely with the county to make sure we're following, you know, the right protocols and isolating those employees, quarantining of those employees. And also, the board had, very early on in the pandemic, we worked closely with restaurants and businesses, both on outdoor dining, addressed complaints. I've got to say, I haven't had any complaint that's come to my office in several months now as compared to kind of early on in the summer. We continue to promote the three Ws of wearing a mask and signage in our public buildings. We've also continued to look at areas where we can limit or provide public services without the public having to come into town hall. And so some of the other things listed, you know, we're kind of working with the local media. There's a app about slow COVID NC that they've encouraged public employees to download. And then there are a number of other items over here for the board to consider, whether there are local ordinances, such as limiting alcohol sales, on-site consumption at earlier time, as well as other restrictions on businesses. Really, I don't know if you just want me to go through that list, but if there's an item in there where you'd like, from the board's standpoint, for the town to bring back to a future meeting, we can certainly do that.
Thank you, Greg. I had asked, put this on the agenda, I can't remember how I came by it. I think perhaps it was after one of the governor's press conferences, or maybe one of our previous phone discussions with the local mayors and the board of the county commissioners and other municipal officials. Nonetheless, I thought it would be appropriate, since we have sort of taken a step back with our own meeting here in terms of format, which all of us felt was appropriate in the context of what's going on in the community, that we should do that, that we would have this in front of us in case this did prompt a discussion about a further action or messaging that the board would think, might think would be appropriate. So I'll ask the board if anything that comes to mind. I didn't offer this in the interest of seeking additional ordinances or restrictions to think this is, at this point, we are primarily in a guiding our own staff, ourselves, our own staff, for their safety, continuing to conduct public business in the safest manner possible, and messaging, messaging, messaging about the three Ws.
Very happy to see the governor has acquired what I call big box doors, to have people there at their door to make sure people are wearing masks. I've got to say, Fresh Market has done the ideal situation all along. They've been really careful. Some of the other big box has not. And I wish all businesses would require their people to either wear masks or face shields and their customers, because Dylan, I'll call it out, the duct through down by the village, nobody wears a mask. The employees don't wear masks, the customers don't wear masks, and it's a pretty tight spot to go into. And, I mean, those are ideal situations for spread. I'm ashamed that some businesses are not taking it more seriously.
It is. I was happy to see the person suddenly show up and the best of you would do mine in the shop. And I thought that that was helpful, and I frankly have gotten into habit myself of pull the door open and stick my head in, and I don't like the way it looks. I'll walk away. You know, it's, there is difficult situations down there.
Yeah. I mean, there are a lot of communities are not taking it seriously. I hope that we are. I wish that people that shop in our community were taking it seriously. It's unfortunate that every community has those, it's just, it's health issue, and they're not thinking about their health or other people's health.
I would just like for that to stay on top of what other local governments in North Carolina are implementing, maybe do a word search or some type of search, so we have a record of what other local governments have passed that has sort of passed the test muster to be legal, just so we have it in our back pocket, not asking for anything. And then, do, and then the question is, do we, through the resources we have, enforce state standards that are being violated? And that would either be, I would think, the planning officials or police department or fire department through the health code. I, you know, I really don't know. I'm not that up on what are we actually doing in terms of enforcing standards that are already out there.
Greg, do you want to speak to that today, or speak to that at the next meeting?
Certainly, what we did early on was a lot of education efforts, and by and large, that was successful. I know from, the chief has had discussion with district attorney's office, and they declined to, you know, to bring enforcement actions on businesses that, you know, fail to follow those guidelines. So I think that has been a bit of an issue, knowing that, you know, your primary enforcement tool, it doesn't really seem to be available. So we really are having to rely more on education and kind of working with those businesses.
Thank you. I guess that brings the follow-up question is, if we do pass a local ordinance, would the CA's office be enforcing that?
The impression I have is no.
That's fine. That's what I respect.
Why don't we settle that question with a direct inquiry? That, or the town attorney, one. Just a question for Greg. John, you may know the answer.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know the exact answer to that, but the School of Government did issue a blog post earlier this week on a similar issue, which dealt with whether local governments can impose, can adopt an ordinance that would impose simple penalties for violations of the governor's order. And the opinion from the School of Government is there's no jurisdiction to do that. And part of that is because they don't feel that local government, unless given express authorization, has the authority to enforce the provisions of an emergency order entered by another body. So I think, I think what the manager has encountered with the district attorney's office is probably consistent with that interpretation.
I think education's great, but, you know, regulation's sometimes a last resort, and it doesn't sound like we even have that opportunity.
Thank you. To your other question, Webb, that may be an inquiry to the Association of Municipalities. I would hope that they would be tracking something as local regulations or actions that, not too much regulation, but actions that communities will take. They may have started that.
Something, I'm thinking the league, or the Association of County Communities, or School of Government would be tracking, and there are groups that, our staff members know where to find that.
It's great. Staff would look for that. That would be helpful. Mr. President? Thank you. Great. Appreciate that. The next item is our Board of Commissioners' agenda. That's you, Mr. Breckley. Mr. Sears?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to look at being proactive. I think our demographics for the areas are changing, and thus the result would be lack of occupancy tax. I've asked a couple of rental companies to see how much they're losing in vacation rental houses. The lack of occupancy taxes, so much of our taxes are, and our budget is based on occupancy and sales tax are going to be affected. I know multiple properties that were in rental programs are now in a year-round situation, and that could change again in the future, but I think you're going to see that our occupancy tax numbers are going to decrease, not greatly this year, but for 2022, you're probably going to find that we're going to be a little short on some of that. And if we can take the time and the energy to forecast that loss of occupancy tax, I think that would be something on the wiser side for us as a town.
When you called later earlier and raised this issue, I think you also suggested what we've all seen, sort of anecdotally, train activity in our neighborhoods being generated by around residency, that sort of thing. There, if you intended that there might be additional infrastructure needs, that we may have to look for.
It's going to be, you know, you've got to think, you're used to a six-month basis of a hundred thousand cars traveling on your roads, and now you have that over a nine-month or ten-month basis. Everything's going to increase.
Water usage.
Water usage, your first responders, your police force, your town maintenance workers, you're going to have more demand all the way across the board. And what you don't want to do is, in two, three years, find that you've got a budget shortage, you're behind the eight ball, and now we have to take the citizens to a different level that they're not prepared for.
Those are great points. Right time to start thinking. I don't have anything special to offer. I was, I had a, wait. Excuse me. I'm sorry. You had anything?
I only have one thing that I would like us to talk to DOT about. It's moved the speed limit on the causeway to forty-five. We've had some message boards out at times, but I wonder if it would behoove us to try to talk to DOT about, as you're coming off the bridge where the forty-five mile an hour sign starts, have that become more noticeable with the flashing light on the sign or something like that?
I agree. I would expand that to ask if we could look into, one of the things that's occurred to me, and I'll mention something else, after I'm through with what you just said. One of the places that's speed sensitive is the village. And when you go into the village there and reduce speed, there's a flashing sign that says, you know, what your speed is. If you're going too fast, it sort of gives you a message to indicate that you're speeding. And I think if we could have their use of that, the causeway there would be a good place for doing that with that reduced speed coming into, into town. And sort of building on that automated, or that sort of messaging, one thing that has come up in the last month or so was the flooding in South Nagseth and the blinking lights. And so after a discussion with Commissioner Foer, I started racking my brain about whether there was a way to kind of automate a process for making sure that those lights were intended to. And after going around in circles, I thought, well, there must be a solution to that. Turned out, after I sent this, staff had also started to think of this, but there are signs that warn you of flooding that have water level sensors built into the sign. So if you put them in the areas that are prone to flooding, as soon as the water starts to rise, the sign starts to flash, completely automated, you know, to the extent that we like that, both offer better service and automated, so we don't have to type an officer to go down there, do something that can be automated.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, you mentioned officer going down. Wouldn't that be a joint effort with Public Works in?
Yes, I think it would. And, you know, I suspect, I think suspect both things happening. It probably ended up, you know, when it needed to happen, that two or three or four people ended up down there, flashing light. If we can automate that, the others will see.
Be better served in cost-efficient lots, too.
If we as a board could prioritize both of those, I'd like to recommend that staff understand that we're prioritizing that. I mean, I'd like to move on both of them as quickly as possible. Obviously, one is a tried and true, like the one at Oats Goat for the Little Bridge. The other is, we haven't seen that personally, seen something similar to that. We haven't seen that, so it might take a little bit more time on that, but I'd like for us to prioritize it.
I see. From the head shake board, it's great. So if you would take that as something we would really like to see.
Thank you.
Someone had shared this article with me, and I thought it rang true for this meeting at the, at the end of the year. It was titled, "Look Forward and Move Forward." It's by a woman named Rebecca Ryan. She writes, "It's happening. Nearly every annual meeting I'm attending opens with an homage to how tough it is, and that everyone is looking forward to getting back to normal. I smell a problem. You cannot look forward and go back. You drive west, do you face east? Later this month, when you turn your calendar to 2021, will you implement your 2019 plan? Nostalgia is a seduction. Going back has never been a good strategy. As Kodak, or Arthur Andersen, or Borders, if you cling to what was, your hand cannot be opened to what could be. She asks a question. Where can you leapfrog? Leaping is advancing from one place to another without progressing through all the stages in between. It's like hitting all of your 2023 goals next year. Most organizations are doing the opposite. They're moving their 2020 goals into 2021 or 2022. They're missing a huge opportunity because major disruptions create perfect conditions to leapfrog. They bring people together against a common adversary. They require flexibility and adaptability, and they increase people's appetite to do something that will create a better future as when we rebuild more wisely after an infrastructure collapse." Second point, remember your purpose. What and how you do your work may be impacted by the pandemic, but if you carefully consider why you do your work, opportunities emerge. Here's an inspiring example. According to a recent study, more than one According to a recent study, more than one independent bookstore has closed each week since the pandemic began, and twenty percent across the country are in danger of closing. Watermark Books in Wichita, Kansas, is one of those bookstores fighting to stay relevant. They closed their cafe and made adjustments. Sarah Bagby says, "With this pandemic, we're better business people again. We've limited our time open. We've taken away the fat that wasn't generating revenue, and we are just selling books." Watermark's purpose is selling books, and Bagby has doubled down on that. Number three, don't forget 2020. Use it. It's already starting. 2020 is a dumpster fire and the worst year, a year to forget. I get it, 2020 has been tough for everyone and terrible for millions of us, but I don't want to forget 2020. I don't want to forget the PPE shortage or George Floyd's asphyxiation. I don't want to forget how we were forty percent more productive in the first few months of the lockdown, or how Europe on mute is as normal as Zoom fatigue. I don't want to forget the refrigerated trucks that store dead bodies. I don't want to forget the cars lined up for COVID tests and at food banks. I don't want to forget the worldwide protests for Black Lives, and that 2020 was the year that Mississippi changed its flag. I don't want to forget how many people voted in the 2020 presidential election, or the forsighted local election officials and volunteers who planned how we could all vote safely. I don't want to forget the day that a black woman became a candidate for vice president, or the night she gave her first speech as vice president-elect. I prayed that this pandemic would change me, and it has, it has rekindled my fire for better futures." Think those notions of leapfrogging, of remembering what it is that we do as a town, and that we remember 2020 as a motivation for doing better than 2021 are all good points. Given to the meeting. Um, is there any other business to come before the board before we go to the closed session?
To approve the employee presentation.
Yes, I'm sorry. That's, that's on the, I had stopped looking at my printed book. Yes, so we need to formally approve, we resolved this in our last meeting, but we need to formally approve gift cards in the amount of $260 for each full-time employee, $130 for each part-time employee, and approve gift cards of $20. That was resolved to be best way to give everyone a handful of turkey, as the board had resolved in lieu of the.
I'll take that motion.
Second.
Motion in the second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, and thank you for catching that. And so now, if there's nothing else, we will come back to the town attorney for a motion for a closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time I asked that the, that someone make a motion to enter closed session pursuant to North County General Statute 143-318.1183, in order to confer with the town attorney regarding matters with the attorney-client privilege and to preserve that privilege, including the Blackburn litigation and the town's condemnation actions.
A move. Thank you. Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Board will be closed session after five to ten minutes recess. The board has returned to open session. Mr. Y, you can report.
Yes, Mayor, the board did confer with the town attorney regarding the matters that we listed. Some direction was given to the town attorney, but no other actions needed before that this time.
Thank you. We ask if there was any other business to come before the board before the closed session. So I ask one more time if there's anything else to come before the board before we recess.
I don't think you want to use some specifics this May.
So a motion to recess this meeting to December sixteenth, uh, May, for a workshop would be in order.
A move. Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you.